Good evening and welcome to the Maple Plain City Council meeting. It is Monday, July 25th at 7:01 PM. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any further discussion? All in favor of adopting the agenda as is, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Next item of business tonight is visitors to be heard. Public comment. Public comment is a courtesy extended to persons wishing to address the city council who would like to comment on something that is not part of the public hearing. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Maple Plain. Speakers may approach the podium one time to make remarks that shall be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate in public comment, please state your name and address before addressing the council. All remarks will be made from the podium and should be made to the council as a whole. Personal attacks are prohibited, as are obscene, profane, and threatening language. Public comment is not a time for council discussion or response, but for hearing the speaker's concerns only. Questions to the council will be for clarification only. If necessary, a staff report on public comment subjects will be prepared for the next city council business meeting. At this time, I'd like to invite forward any visitors to be heard. Please come to the podium.
Judy Sutherland, I'm on Main Street East. I was looking at the proposal for the downtown district, and my concern is that the building is really huge. And I know they say, well, the last developer had it three stories high. But if I recall, it was three stories high from our museum on Maple, and the rest was low. This is three stories all on Main Street, and my concern is, I look at the John Quinlivan building, and that's only two stories, and that is huge. I'm worried about where McGarry's are gonna park, 'cause they're all the way down to 24 foot. So now they have to figure out where they're gonna go. And if you're gonna have parking for City Hall at an angle, whatever, that's gonna all get taken up. You can say, and I suppose it would be at night, but anyway, the street really is busy with McGarry's parking. I just see it as a huge building and 79 apartments. I'm hoping that you don't want out of this building so bad that you're willing to do whatever they're gonna want, that you don't look at what it's gonna look like. Because I didn't think we wanted parking on the Highway 12 side. I might be wrong, and I know things change and you gotta kind of go with it, but I really have a concern about that the whole block is three stories. You know, if it was low and then was gonna be high for a section, that maybe would be different, but it's going to be huge sitting there. That's my only concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sutherland. Any other visitors to be heard tonight? Thank you, we will move on then. Next item of business this evening is our consent agenda, which includes the city council meeting minutes, the 2018 street reconstruction turf program, and the firefighter hire. And I'm gonna turn that over to staff before we look at that.
Thank you, Mayor. Council had asked me to just address one issue with regard to the 2018 street reconstruction turf program regarding concerns that the current soil is not being removed and replaced. So this is just clarification that I have spoken with a few different turf professionals who assure me that it is possible to grow grass in soils that are, you know, clayey. We have grass all over town that has grown this way. It is more difficult, obviously, but it would be very expensive to remove and replace everyone's soil. So the recommendation and the way that we fit this into a program that was affordable essentially and still promising was to incorporate a process of aeration and top dressing. So aeration will loosen the soil, top dressing will amend the soil, and then we, the homeowner works in new grass seed, fertilizer, et cetera, to promote that seed growth.
Thank you for that clarification. You're welcome. So with that clarification, looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item of business this evening is accounts payable. And we will first look at the, to approve the city check batch in the amount of $177,520.21. Looking for a motion to approve that. So moved. Moved by Cahill.
Second by DeLuca.
Second by DeLuca. Any questions or discussion with regards to approving the city check batch? Hearing none, all in favor of approving?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. The next motion is to approve the fire partnership check batch, totaling $8,584.80. Looking for a motion to approve the fire partnership check batch.
Make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cahill. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the fire partnership check batch.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item of business this evening is our staff reports, and those have been all submitted for our review. And we'll receive those verbally. I just do, I have one question regarding the public works report. It says there's been multiple vandalism incidents in Rainbow Park. Do we need to do something different? Do we need to look at the rest? Where are these happening? What is going on?
You know, I don't know which timeframe exactly he was referring to with that one, so I would have to check on that and get back. Typically, they're happening in the bathrooms.
They still are.
Yeah, and, can't relieve. So the process typically is, report to West Chenipin to file the report, and then depending on what the damage is, Dylan will either fix it, or, you know, we've had to call in a plumber a couple of times. So, you know, we had looked at doing the locks, the timed locks. I haven't been able to get back to the camera question, so the locks would definitely be the fastest. But if we're trying to incorporate those into a camera system, it's, that gets a lot more complicated.
I guess I just don't wanna see it continue to go on if there's something our staff needs done before then. And the fact that it made it into a staff report and said multiple times, I thought it was at least worth the ask, so.
Yeah, I can follow up with Dylan and see if I can get a better read on how. He usually will tell me specifically if it's significant damage or vandalism. And he really hasn't mentioned it too much lately, so.
Maybe it's from the last times report.
Yeah, it might be minorish stuff, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments regarding staff reports? Hearing none, looking for a motion to receive the staff reports as submitted.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Frances. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item of business is revolve manufacturing conditional use permit, and I'm gonna turn this over to our city planner, Mark Olvis.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. This item is coming before you tonight after being considered by the planning commission at their last regular meeting. It's a request for site plan review and a conditional use permit to allow heavy manufacturing in the existing building and site located at 1755 Halgren Road. The applicant revolve manufacturing is requesting that the city consider both actions, which would allow them to utilize and move into the existing building and use the subject site for the business operations that they currently have just down the street at 5370 Highway 12. Property is located west of Halgren Road at the northwest intersection of Halgren and Highway 12. There's an existing building located on the property. The property is zoned I industrial, and it's guided by the city's comprehensive plan as industrial, and it's approximately 5.84 acres. So the city was approached by the applicant about the possibility of relocating their existing business into this existing building, which is about 35,000 square feet in overall size. The applicant's been, has been operating their business at 5370 Highway 12, and we know them as Stern Assembly, and so they've been operating out of that facility for quite some time. This building became vacant, or vacated when Proto Labs consolidated all of their manufacturing facilities to the east side of the cities into one facility, and so they previously had occupied this for manufacturing and office. And so the city met with Revolve, and we talked about kind of their processing a little bit further. We've also visited their existing building on numerous occasions and determined that the plastic molding or the roto mold process that they utilize in producing kind of their larger scale plastic components and plastic items does qualify under the city's definition as heavy manufacturing. And so with that, the city would be required to issue a conditional use permit for this property to allow the heavy manufacturing to occur. And then anytime there's a change in use of commercial properties, the city does have a site plan review process in place that allows us to kind of just go through, look at the existing site, compare it to the criteria that are spelled out in the city's ordinance, and then determine if there's any places where the site would need to be brought up to a more current standard. It's always a little bit tricky when we go into existing facilities because we're trying to balance what's already there with what the standards are within the ordinance. Sometimes bringing a site up to full compliance with all applicable standards is prohibitive, so we always try to just look at it. And then try to assess really where are there any deficiencies in the site or overall standards that are applied. In this particular case, this site is a much more recently constructed and developed site, so a lot of the site attributes are already brought, have already been developed at the current standard. For example, parking, the pavement areas, curb and gutter, site lighting, landscaping are all areas that have been developed under our current standard. So with that, Revolve is looking at just a couple of aspects of this site that would be changed on the outside to allow for the utilization by their current business. And so we looked at the overall site. We looked at what they're asking for in terms of their, the site improvements, and then also the interior improvements. And I can kind of talk through a couple of those details. So as it relates to the business that they have here right now, they currently employ 30 people in Maple Plain. They have plans which would expand that maybe almost by double. They employ about 130 people statewide in the state. They operate a roto mold or rotational molding business, which produces plastic components and other large scale plastic items. Rotational mold is a kind of specific proprietary process that they utilize in their business. They would move the existing machinery that they have in the 5370 into the inside space here, which would accommodate and allow for that type of equipment. And then they would kind of repurpose that space, primarily the space that we're talking about, the larger manufacturing spaces located on the north side of that building. There is office space that is more specifically located on the south and southwest corners of that building. They have limited office use now in their existing facility. They would plan on continuing to have a limited office area. There is the possibility that they would lease space, office space specifically in that southeast corner to another user. It is multi-tenant in the way that building was set up, and there is the ability to do that without really any change in the configuration of the building at all. And so with that, when we kind of look at the overall building and how it's utilized, we looked at, you know, things like setbacks, parking, lighting, landscaping, outdoor storage. What we noted is the parking for this site based on kind of this manufacturing or product manufacturing and office use, just breaking down the square footages that they have. There's about 89 spaces that are required. There's about 99 on site. We think there's adequate parking to accommodate the use that's being proposed, and even the office kind of multi-tenant, if that's something that would occur in that building. There's adequate parking to support that. We noted that the existing site lighting is a compliant cutoff type fixture that supports both the front and rear parking lots. If they were to add any additional lighting to the exterior of the building, say a building type mounted light, we would ask that it's compliant with the applicable cutoff standards. The applicant also noted that they would be locating two bulk material storage tanks, which are currently serving their existing building at 5370 to the, what would be the northwest corner of this site. So really something in this area over here. And we did note in the report that they would be painting those to match. I think you saw correspondence that came through that said they would not be doing that. They would leave them the galvanized steel, which is what they have currently. I don't know if there's a feeling one way or another from council. That was something that we had, I think, noted during our walkthrough, but they said that it would be difficult to make that a reality. There also is an existing fence storage area on the east side of the building. You can see it if you drive by. That storage area has a six-foot tall opaque fence. They are not planning on storing anything that would exceed the height of that fence. Planning commissioners did recommend a condition that if materials to be stored exceeded the height, that they increase the height to an eight-foot fence to wholly screen whatever was in there. So that would be a condition that would be applied if they exceeded the height of the fence, not as a upfront requirement. But I did talk to the management again, and they don't believe that that is gonna be an issue for them with what they're planning on storing. We also talked that our ordinance looks at and requires both screening of, with fencing and landscaping. Ultimately, the planning commission reviewed this and talked about whether it made sense to add screening along the boulevard there or somewhere, something else. And commissioners felt that as long as this fencing wholly screened the products or products that were going to be stored, that no additional landscaping was needed. And so they made that recommendation also to the council. There was no public comment at the planning commission. There was no public comment provided either verbally or written prior or after the public hearing to the city. So with that, planning commissioners did review the project. They did talk about outdoor storage. They did talk about screening and landscaping. And they did talk about the bulk storage. Commissioners also just asked and noted if our ordinance is adequately accommodating noise, if that were to become a problem, given the heavy manufacturing. It was noted that there hasn't been a noise problem with this particular business. I think there was a conversation that the past use of this building may have generated some noise at one point that was heard by residential properties on the other side of the highway. And then similarly with odors coming from the building, we had a similar discussion. But ultimately, planning commissioners felt that the city's current ordinances would accommodate that level of nuisance, and that the proposed use of this facility based on historic use by this business in their 5370 did meet all the criteria that the city has established, and they recommended approval of the conditional use permit and site plan review, with that one condition changed to the fencing, that should they store items in that outdoor storage area that exceed the height of the fence, that it be increased to an eight-foot height. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the application or the resolution that was put in the package.
Questions for Mike?
I have no questions. I would just say that I'm fine with them not painting. I think you can see the storage tanks now, and they're moving to somewhere more hidden, so I'm fine with that.
And I would add, I've been in this city for 30 years. As long as I can remember, there was some rotational molding going at their existing building. So as far as nuisance and odors and noise and things, I don't think it's going to be apparent. And I spent 20 years in the injection molding industry, which, similar but different, but I mean, we're still using the same base resins. And how it got classified as heavy manufacturing, I'm not quite sure. But I think, I think it'll be a good repurpose of that building. And I concur. I have galvanized as far.
Other comments or questions for staff or for members? With that, I am looking to approve a resolution, a motion to approve a resolution approving a conditional use permit and site plan review to allow heavy manufacturing on the property located at 1755 Halgren Road.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote since it's a resolution.
Cahill?
Aye.
DeLuca?
Aye.
Moskowsky?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Frances?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five to zero. Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
Next item of business this evening is our solid waste contract, and I'm gonna turn that over to our administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I spent the last couple months trying to get quotes for the solid waste, which is, our current contract expires September of this year, the end of September. So we have essentially kind of three players in the market. Republic Services, formerly Randys, who we, who is our current contract. Waste Management quoted it, and then there's a kind of a newcomer, Curbside Waste, as well. Republic, everybody's kind of familiar with the offerings there. Waste Management, very similar. They do not provide a, an onsite organics program. So they would have a drop-off site. So that would essentially be a bin at the Public Works Building. I did check, we do get utilization reports from Republic, and we currently, I believe, have about 35 participants in that organics program. The yard waste, they have a choice of either an all-pay or a subscription, so that would be kind of a choice there. Republic Services, you, I'm sure you all know, we do kind of an all-pay system right now. I did put together an approximate average quarterly bill based on the itemizing. So I used the, I believe I used the middle size of each item, so the 65 gallon, to determine those. So the Republic Services is the least expensive at $48 and change. Waste Management would be second at $66 and change, and then Curbside Waste at 94. And then the next line down, I added that organics program. We've included the city facilities. We do get document destruction services for free right now with our Republic contract. We would not have that available through Waste Management. And so that would be an additional cost to the city to find a provider for that. And then we've got just kind of some expenses from spring cleanup. We do pay per ton for materials disposal with Republic, and the Waste Management would be included. And then the annual increases are similar. Republic is proposing a four and a half percent increase annually. Waste Management uses the waste sewer, I forget what the T stands for, in the index, that he said typically ranges from 3.7 to 4.5 percent. And then we would keep our pickup day on Monday, and then Waste Management, we would still be, have to negotiate that. He was checking on to see if that was a possibility. I'm happy to answer any questions. We do have representatives from Republic here. I did tell the others when we were meeting and invite them for answering questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
Organics. We all got a can, I don't know how many years ago, for organics. And I had asked for my can to be picked up, because we don't do that. So is it an optional program with Republic?
Are you speaking of yard waste or organics?
Organics.
Is there a can for organics?
Yeah, Randys delivered one many years ago.
Yeah, it's a blue one with a black lid. Yep.
So you just let your can out of your garage?
Yeah, and I don't wanna pay for it, because I don't use the service.
So my name's Matt Herman with Republic Services, joining me is Deb Gatz. Thank you for having us. I think I heard the question about food waste or organics. So prior to the co-collection program that Randys is offering that we're operating now, there was a cart-based program in the city. And when that ended, I would have assumed we got the carts. But if there was, you're not being charged for it.
Okay.
And, and we currently don't run a food waste organics truck through the city. We do the co-collection program where you get the bags, and you put your food waste in the bags, and put the bags in your trash, and we take it out of the trash at Delano. That's what's included now.
Oh, okay.
So if you have a cart you don't want, I'll come get it.
Yeah, I believe.
But I hear you say that's included. This is saying that's $79 a year.
Correct. That's correct. It's, it's an optional $79 a year program for residents. Yard waste is included in the base fee.
So how, so we can, I'm sorry. So residents can opt out of the organics program?
You don't have to do anything to not do it. If you choose to do it, it's a $79 fee, and we will send you the special durable compostable bags, and then you can begin putting your organics in your trash, and we'll take it out.
Okay, thank you for the question.
Yep, no problem.
We are coming off a 10-year contract with Randys that, that had a, every other year, they could increase the price of service by CPI. You are proposing a four and a half percent increase annually. Normally, I would say that is excessive, although we are in a period right now where inflation is at historic levels, but I suspect it will go back down. And at the end of this five-year contract, we will have compounded over 25 percent increase in a quarterly rate. Is that four and a half percent negotiable?
At this point, it is industry standard. I think you see that within the proposals. We could potentially discuss it. I'm not at liberty to say, yes, let's move it. It was part of our proposal. And another part of our proposal, we didn't raise any prices in year one for trash service. So we're leaving those flat for this year. And I think if we, if we looked at some price increase this year, and how does that play out over the remaining years, you know, we could, we could do the math. The compelling costs for price increases right now in our industry and in a lot of industries are people and fuel. Labor and fuel are absolutely running wild. In the garbage industry, you talked about a 10-year contract that we had. We probably had $15 an hour drivers or less at the time when we started this contract. Now we're trying to get them for 30. So we've seen a doubling of labor, if not more, in that time, and we've seen what fuel has done recently. The cost of our equipment. Another, another component of this, of this package that we proposed is a kind of a large increase in recycling for this year. Because you've had a 10-year contract, you've had a generation of contracts that doesn't really exist anymore in recycling. If you look across the metro, the vast majority of contracts start with a five, some start with a six, some even start with a seven. $5 recycling is pretty much kind of the norm bottom. And a lot of that took place at a time when, in 2018, when China stopped. purchasing commodities from the United States, commodities in the form of almost everything that the East and West Coast generated in the form of recyclables. What that did for a period of four or five years, it, number one, it shut down the exports of all these materials, and then everything from the coast flooded to the center. So we've always had our Midwest markets where we use material, and we still do. A lot of folks have expressed concern that things don't even get recycled anymore. They still do, and they always have, but the economics of it have changed forever, because we no longer have an endless customer on the other side of the ocean that would take everything. So as the last three or four or five years, we've sort of played this out, we have good markets for material, recycling's absolutely the right economic and environmental thing to do, it's just more expensive than it was in two thousand seventeen, when we had endless supplies of it. So when, endless markets, rather. So when we look at the proposal that we have here, holding trash flat for a year, and trying to get that recycling caught up a little bit, because you have that generational contract, I think it's very fair. I think it's a proposal we're very proud of. If you had a proposal linked to CPI right now, it could be eight, nine, or ten percent.
I understand.
So I-
But historically, you look at the past forty years, you're somewhere around one-point-seven to two-point-three on average, where in difficult economic times right now. And I'm just saying, I expect it to settle back down, and we're going to be confronted with four-and-a-half percent annually compounded. And like I said, forty dollars a month ends up becoming fifty-five dollars a month per quarter, which is slightly-
I, I won't disagree. The costs of, the costs of offering the service are not, are not decreasing, and they're, we're showing, we're seeing pressures beyond even that of inflation. So it is, it is a challenge for us, and I, I respect that comment.
I've had two bits of resident feedback. One is that, over time, the amount of garbage that people have and the amount of recycling they have is almost flop. It's almost like I, we can get by with garbage every other week, except for the smell. And then recycling every week, I mean, every, I watched this morning, everybody's recycling was overflowing for two weeks. And I don't know if you can speak to that. And then the second one is, we've been getting complaints about the service. So talk about what-
Sure.
-steps is being taken by Republic to up the customer service.
Sure, let me start with the first one, on recycling capacity. It's a, it's a conversation that we hear a lot, and it's not uncommon. Why, you know, it's not always less recycling, or less trash service, it's always, let's do recycling twice every, every week as well. Reality is, that costs a lot. You're doubling every fixed and variable cost associated with offering the service, where what we find in most communities is if you have two, five, or ten percent that are just really have more than they can, let's get them an extra cart at no charge. Driving around tonight, I see a lot of sixty-five-gallon recycle carts. Anybody who wants can call us, and we'll bring them a ninety-five. So we can add fifty percent capacity to that recycling cart at no cost. And then we can double that again with another ninety-five, again at no cost. Because that's no extra driver, no extra truck.
So the purpose, so if I get a resident that said, hey, mine's overflowing, call up, get a second bin?
Yep. First, I would start with a bigger bin. If you have a sixty-five, I would get a ninety, the ninety-five. And then if that doesn't work, get two ninety-fives. And people know, if, if you are, if people get a lot of material through Amazon, they have a lot more cardboard than they used to, and you might just need that second ninety-five. And those are services that are available, and I can tell you are a lot more economically and environmentally friendly than driving another truck through the city another day a week.
What about the service question?
Yep, so service issues, we've, we've had some conversations with staff, and certainly Deb and I have worked with some individual residents as well. A couple of things have happened. Most of the service issues that we've identified have been in the spring. So I think sort of the timeline here is, is pretty important. Randys and Republic underwent a major integration that started on March twenty-eighth. So really, February twenty-eighth, we took all of the Randys customer routing and billing data and merged it into a common system with Republic's stuff. So now we have all of the information available to our customer service drivers all in one spot. At the same time, as that data was coming in, we completed, we used that merger of data to complete a major reroute across the entire metro area. So not just Randys, but Randys and Republic, and how we do business from Eden Prairie to Inver Grove Heights to Blaine, we, we moved a lot of things around. And through that reroute, we had new drivers and new areas on new routes, and that caused some, some concerns. I don't think specifically here, but certainly across the metro, we had a lot of, we had a lot of challenges, which led to really high call volumes, which now, if you're just calling to get an extra cart and you can't get through, it's really frustrating. So we know we had that condition through April, May, June, and then we really got our systems tied, tied back together. One of the things that was most challenging for our drivers in Delano, Randys drivers have always used our Routware system, which is an onboard navigation system, which takes them dot-to-dot-to-dot through their day. We were able to have that system at Randys because we had two-way communication between that tablet and our customer service system. When we made the transition to a new customer service software, we had to build a bridge so that we'd communicate with our tablet, and it didn't do it very well. And it, we're still working on some of those communication issues. Getting two softwares that weren't designed to like each other, to like each other, can be challenging. But by and large, our guys were essentially flying blind for parts of the spring and into summer. Drivers who learned how to drive and do the job on a tablet now had a paper map in their hand. And, and it was, it was a big change. So we worked through several iterations of that, and, and our guys are now out with, our drivers are out with Routware. They have the digital capability, they can see the stops. But that doesn't mean we don't have misses. We still have misses, but I think we have them in a far better position. I think the data that Clarissa and I looked at here a couple of weeks ago, we were at ten or twelve misses a month earlier in the summer, and in July and August, we were at one or two.
So, question. It took a week for my yard waste to be picked up, and I called in every day to Republic. He was told, yep, we're escalating it, they'll get a call back from a supervisor.
What was the time? When, when did that happen?
About a month ago? And I was, I would wait until late afternoon, and I'd call in, go, have they come in today? Oh, no, not today anymore, tomorrow. It's really hard to, to work with that, when you keep getting that message. Had the person said, we're short-staffed on the route, we're not going to get to you until next Monday, I could have told my neighbors who also had yard waste, they'll catch us on Monday, and pull it back off the street. You know, it was just very frustrating.
Yeah, and, and that, that would be frustrating. And before I leave, I'd like to get your address, so we can figure that out. We're seeing that, you know, when, when errors compound and work gets more stressful, the margin of error just shrinks. And, and little things become bigger things, and things that shouldn't be problems become problems. And we've been working through that very diligently. We, you're not the only case where I know that that has either been given to a driver who just decided he didn't want to do it, or got lost somewhere on the way to that driver. We had some technical reasons involving codes that I don't even want to get into, that were preventing some of those misses from getting dispatched to a driver. More likely than not, at times, we had miscommunication between our, between our leadership over there in Delano and the drivers.
I had gotten used to being able to call Randys and talk to a live human right away on the local number and go, hey, they, they missed me today. And now to call you guys, I have to look it up online and-
You can call the exact-
-figure out the region and-
No, you just have to call the exact same number you've always called, seven-six-three-nine-seven-two-three-three-three-five. The number hasn't changed, and by and large, the people answering the phone hasn't changed. What has changed is that Cindy, our receptionist, doesn't say, hi, thanks for calling Randys, do you have commercial or residential? And then she puts you into one of the queues. Now, a, a, a voice system puts you into one of those queues, and then you're waiting for that response. The same team of Delano reps that were answering the phone are still answering the phone, a lot of them work at home now, as opposed to sitting in the Delano office. It's, but by and large, our Delano team is the same team that was answering the phone, sending the bills, driving the trucks, supervising the drivers. Deb and I are both legacy Randys employees. Our team is by and large the same team we've had for ten years.
That's good to know.
And that's not to say that change hasn't been hard, and there aren't things that we're going to get better at, because there are. But, but we will, and that's a commitment from, from your local Republic team, which used to be your local Randys team.
I am a little bit hesitant. You know, in looking at Republic and Waste Management, I've been elected official in Maple Plain for eight years, and I would say in the last nine to twelve months, I have had more phone calls, more stops at the gas station, more stops on the ball field with people complaining and unhappy with their service. Whether it's double billing, not getting returned phone calls, not getting things picked up. So it's good to hear you're looking internally, but I think we need to see action, because I don't want my phone ringing, and I don't want our staff taking time dealing with this either. So, yeah, I just, I'm struggling a little bit with this. And we just had the double billing incident.
Well, let's talk about that a little bit. There was not a double billing. There was, there was a double mailing, and most notably, where we got most of the calls from this, and I wasn't aware that that had hit here. Our printer printed two, printed the same set of bills twice. So when they moved that batch to print, any customers that had auto-pay, it said, hey, we're going to take another hundred bucks. And then, when the system realized that there was not another invoice, it said, your payment failed.
It's a little stressful.
Agreed. But the payment failed, thankfully, because it didn't happen, because the system did recognize there wasn't an extra there. And some, there, there were some mailings that were extra bills that went out. Nobody has been charged or will be charged through their auto-pay extra. That system caught itself, it gave, it gave the error message, it said, we're going to take a second payment, or we're going to take a payment, and then it caught itself. But it did not charge anybody.
But it still went out as a mistake and created a lot of stress.
Um, understood.
I understand, no one's paid twice.
Yep.
But you need to understand, the senior citizens get upset, and they call us-
Yep.
-because we're the ones who make them go with this company.
Understood.
So we're the ones taking the heat.
Yep.
So that's my concern.
And I share that concern. And if, we have talked with staff, and we can come up with other ways. I think staff is communicating with Deb and I more directly anytime they hear anything. We've worked in other communities where we can set up an email address, where, you know, we, you can get directly to our local team if you don't want to make a phone call. So there's things we can talk about to make sure the questions get identified and answered. You know, an underlying challenge in our entire industry right now is labor, and labor is, i- is impacting every single hauler operating in this market, some more than others. I think we are managing it very well, and I think although we've had an ownership change, we've had some of these challenges, I think we're doing very well. And we understand where the weaknesses are, and we are committed to work through them. And we're getting to a point now where we put a lot of these challenges behind us, and I think we're in the best position of any hauler that is in the market or presented to you in, on paper today, to meet your expectations going forward.
Are you willing to commit to give staff either a direct email or phone number, so our staff and we aren't taking the time every time someone calls and is upset?
Number one, your staff always has availability to Deb and I anytime they want it. So a hundred percent, we'll give you two cellphones, two home numbers, and two office numbers. And, and we can set up an email that is managed by us as well as folks on the ground. So we could, we can set up an email that multiple people have access to, so it's not one person if they're not there. So we, we can absolutely take steps to make sure you have an easy outlet for concerns. I understand that you can't solve the problem, only we can. So it's, I, I want you to get them to us as quickly as we can, so we can pull them apart and solve them.
That would be great. And I think it's important that we stick with the contract, it's better for our roads, but we need our residents to be happy. And I don't want more work for staff, and I don't want more work for me with things I can't do.
Yep. And I can come back here in ninety days, thirty days, whatever interval you'd like, and address some of the concerns. We've looked at putting together an issue log, which sort of looks at all of the F-two notes, which are the customer service notes in our system, that we can review on a regular basis. And I, we have absolutely nothing to hide. If we have a problem, we want to identify it, so we can share that, we can look at that. But you have our full commitment to identify and solve problems.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So the proposal also mentions that you'll be moving away from the additional six-dollar fee for yard waste bins. Would that start with this new contract this fall? Because that could be a huge win for our residents in convincing them that this was a good move.
Yeah, we will stop charging the yard waste container when this contract goes into effect.
And do people who don't have a bin, I'm assuming, can then request one?
I don't know if we would do it, yeah, we could consider doing it this fall. I know in other communities, we're, we're committed to do it before the start of next yard waste season.
Okay.
So as we're kind of ramping up that education in March and April to get the carts out there. And the, the reason that we're in favor of carts, carts are a safety measure for our drivers. Our drivers do not die in the cab of their truck, they die on the street. So if we can keep them in the cab of their truck, it's the best place to provide that service from. So if, i- it's, it's just a safer, more efficient, more effective way to offer that service. Historically, Randys has viewed it as a cost, so they wanted to recover that cost. We're taking the approach now that we want the carts out there, we want the convenience, we want the automation, we want the safety for our drivers.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for being here tonight, and for answering. All right, so we are looking for a motion to approve the five-year solid waste collection license to Republic for the period of October first, two thousand twenty-two, through September thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. I should say Republic Services.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember DeLuca. I think we've already answered this, but any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the five-year solid waste collection lic- license to Republic Services for October one, twenty-two, through September thirty-one, two thousand twenty-seven, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Before you ask for a motion on number two, does anyone know what that exactly means? Is that, is it necessary?
So our, you know what, and as presented, that's comical, I didn't actually attach So our ordinance is a license, but we contract with the provider. So it's, we're currently under contract, but there's not really any mention of a license. So this was an attempt to get in the contract, but also do the license thing that our ordinance says, that we should be doing. So the contract is very, very similar to the last one, there are some slight term changes based on the transition from Randys to Republic.
Okay, so when you say in terms substantially the same, you're not saying that the dollar amounts are going to change, it's just the language might be a little bit different?
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's, it's just that Legalese type stuff. And I can actually send it to you if you'd like.
I really don't want to say it. Anytime I say substantially, I think of kind of, really close.
All right. So we are looking for a motion to approve contracting with Republic Services with terms in substantially the same form as presented, and enable city administrator and city attorney to finalize the contract terms, and city administrator and mayor to execute the contract.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Francis. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries five to zero. Next item of business this evening is the Hennepin County Active Living Grant, and we will turn this over to Grant, our Assistant to the City Administrator.
So the city was recently awarded with the Hennepin County Active Living Grant. This is a grant that we applied for in late June, so it was roughly one of the first projects that I was able to start when I got to join staff with you all. So what this, this grant is for, it's used to promote active living and out- Um, so what this, uh, this grant is for, it's used to promote active living, uh, and outdoor activities and specifically among certain groups in the community. Um, and so with it, uh, it provides five thousand dollars from the county, um, and that's to be used towards equipment, uh, that's going to promote that kind of activity. Uh, and so when we, uh, began applying for this grant, we really focused on the area surrounding Haven Homes, uh, because elderly population uh, currently doesn't have benches on the trails that surround it and we're talking primarily, Bigger Park Road, uh, Gateway Boulevard, and then it continues up towards Howard Avenue and Oak Street, or we are proposing to put some of those benches. Uh, but the purpose of that would be to, um, put benches along those trails to provide reprieve for the elderly population that's, that's using them and, and that's not currently there. Um, and so we're currently proposing, um, two types of benches and you can see them, uh, on your sheet. There's bench one thirty-eight, it's labeled, uh, and that is, uh, currently used in our other parks and that's kind of why we're sticking with it. It's trying to keep that, uh, uniformity, uh, between all of our parks and, and keeping it kind of looking the same throughout the community. Uh, and then the second park, or the second bench is bench eighty-eight, uh, and that one is, uh, we selected because it's, it's similar in looks to one thirty-eight, but it's slightly more decorative. Um, and I guess you can see at the bottom of the, the second page for this, we have a map. Uh, the four red dots signify, uh, the bench eighty-eights that we've been putting in the community, um, so that's the more decorative one. And then the pink dot, if you look, is up by the tot lot, uh, and that would be bench eighty-eight and that's the one that's gonna be uniform with the other benches throughout our community. Um, in terms of costs, we're proposing five total benches, uh, for a total cost of five thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars. Um, with that, since the grant covers five thousand dollars, the city just comes out needing to pay the extra one hundred fifty-four that's not covered. Uh, and yeah, I think that we're currently looking for a motion to approve the contract, which is on the following pages, and then the purchase and installation costs for, for these benches.
So we're gonna do that in two separate, um, actions, Grant, so first, uh, we'll approve the contract with Hennepin County for the Active Living Equipment Program and looking for a motion to do that.
So moved.
Okay, moved by DeLuca. I'll second it. Uh, any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Exhibit A shows Hennepin County has authorized us to purchase three benches.
Oh, uh, that would be a, a typo then of, originally we were looking at three benches, um, quotes that we received last year from Flagship, um, Flagship, I don't remember if there's more of that, dot com, they had stated that it was gonna be more costly for these benches. Uh, quotes now show they're only gonna be a thousand dollars, so we can afford more benches within the grant money. So that's why we expanded to five and then we're able to stretch the location around Haven Homes for more benches.
So the current motion on the table is to approve the contract with Hennepin County for the Active Living Equipment Program. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions regarding this part of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Nice work, thank you for doing that. The second part of the motion is to approve the purchase of benches and related materials and services to install the benches as needed. Looking for discussion or motion on that?
A point of clarification. I appreciate the fact that we get a fancier bench. Bench is a bench. One bench cost about six hundred dollars, the other bench cost about over a thousand dollars. Simple logic would say we could probably get a few more benches if we just stuck with the standard one thirty-eight that's in every one of our parks. Was that considered?
Uh, originally I think the, the plan was, I guess, no, we hadn't considered necessarily, that's an idea to go with, uh, which we can look into, uh, further. I don't know if you looked into that Clarissa?
We, I mean, definitely contemplated it, I personally am huge on placemaking and I believe that a, a bench with a slight, slightly more of a shape to it, um, would lend to, um, the space and, and, um, make it more inviting, um, to look a little more comfortable to me. Um, but also the grant language, we had to essentially tie the grant language to our comprehensive plan um, and kind of pick out parts, and so when we were focusing on Haven Homes, it was, okay, we're focusing on a new development area. We have a specific population that this is, is aimed at. Um, and this little stretch of streets and such matches up with the, the, um, bike and ped plan within the comprehensive plan. So in theory, we could potentially double the size, the, the number of benches, but, but they're all gonna be kind of crammed into that space. And I, I think I would me personally would rather spend.
Were there any other parts of town that are in the comprehensive plan where benches could have been put?
Um, I, I don't recall the bike and ped plan, uh, off the top of my head, I mean, we don't really have that much for trails and sidewalks, uh, throughout town, but.
I as well had the same question and thought, um, we can get three more benches, um, if we went with one thirty-eight, which is already consistent in the town. Um, I've sat on bench one thirty-eight multiple times, uh, had no issues. Um, seems like a better use of our resources to offer, uh, more vent, more benches. I, I don't think they're ugly, um, by any means and, um, it's consistent with what is in town. So that was my thought, um, as well.
So we could, we could check on it, um, and kind of similar to the three benches versus four, five, whatever it is, you know, we, um, just have to run everything through the grant management people and make sure that it aligns okay with their processes and such.
I, I kind of like the difference because this particular corridor that you're using, the more decorative one isn't necessarily parked by this Gateway Boulevard and it's, it's Bigger Park. You're putting an existing one up in the tot part. We've got, we've got backless, but the same model except backless around Veterans Memorial, so I don't, I personally.
And we have backs by the basketball courts.
Right, and I, and I, so I don't have a problem with it. I, my only concern would be, do we really need three benches on Gateway Boulevard? So I mean, I, I, I don't know if you can buy with two and put that third one somewhere else. I, that's not, I'm not questioning that. I, I, I am questioning, but but, I mean, it, it just on the, when I look at the topographical here, it just looks very busy with, with, with benches along Gateway. Just a comment. Do you have any idea, so we've got five benches that you're going to install new. And I believe we have three left over from Neriside Park, which are gonna go in Veterans Memorial and then I think maybe potentially one over in Bryant Wood or one over in Rainbow. I can't remember, but that's a total of eight pads that have to be poured. Have you looked into contracting prices to pour eight pads?
Yeah, so we have sent out, uh, requests for quotes that went out, uh, late last week. Uh, we haven't heard anything back yet, but they have a deadline of September second, so still waiting to hear back.
Do you have an idea?
Uh, not a, not a baseline idea off the top of my head, um, but hopefully with those quotes, we'll get a better idea, but I, I'm not aware.
A lot, concrete success. Dylan has also offered to pour those pads.
Who did?
Dylan. So we were gonna see kind of where we came in with the contracts and, or with the, uh, quotes and if it was something reasonable, uh, source it out, but if it gets pretty pricey, then we can probably just, if you guys are okay with Dylan pouring concrete pads, that is within his skill set.
Loses.
I was like, what is the word I'm looking for?
Other comments or questions? Alright, so next steps then would be to go back to look at the grant to see if we can submit different before we make the motion to approve purchasing then, or?
Yeah, or you can, you could do a contingent, what were, what was the timeline on this one again?
I think work might have to be completed, or no, is it by October, or is that?
September first through October thirty-first, cause that's on the right, sixty day window?
There we go.
Job.
Yep.
Yeah, so as long as we can get done within there. Yeah.
Uh, what's the lead time on the benches? Because when I bought the ones from
Right.
For Rotary, it was. For Rotary, they were five weeks out. Now they, I had some little, I had some customization to them, but they were still out five weeks.
Yeah, I don't know currently, but we can certainly look into that.
Are you dealing with rent?
Uh, yeah, with, yeah.
And if anything, we could still pour the pads, so that way at least the work, you know, and there was the intention and have them ordered between the timeframe, right, so we can honor the grant.
I'll make the motion to purchase it, if you want to put a contingency in there on benches, that I'm, I'm okay with that, I, I think it's a great idea.
Let's just be really clear about our goal is, like, if we, if we want more benches of the same style. So we've got essentially, you know, in theory, we have five thousand dollars to spend, right, um, and we have to put them along the bike ped plan. So if, if we can get eight benches or ten benches, you'd rather have the original design?
That is, that's my preference.
You can get seven or, you can get seven or eight.
We can get seven. We can get seven and have extra, if I did my math right, of one thirty-eight, which is what we presently have, and then they'd match. Any other thoughts?
And those seven would be in the gateway?
They'd still be in the same spots.
Well, no, I don't think that we need more within that same area.
Cause we've got four.
It's more of what other areas can we put them?
Well, we can look at our comp plan and we'll get the walking and pass, figure that out.
But I mean, you've got, you've got the walking path that goes around Rainbow, which has, which gets used quite a bit.
Just, I don't believe it's actually in our plan. Probably could use.
Let's, uh, let's not, let's not, let's not lose the opportunity window.
Bryant Wood, the tot lot, Howard.
Yep.
So let's get them ordered, so I make a motion to get them on order and if it.
So what are we ordering?
I'll, I'll, I'll go with the, uh, with the one thirty-eights if, if, if you can, in the course of the next week and a half, confirm with the state that, uh, that you can swap out and still stay within that five thousand dollar window.
Okay.
Alright, so there's a motion by Councilmember Fay to order bench number one thirty-eight, as many as possible with the five thousand dollar limit as long as Grant is able to work within the grant restrictions for that. Is that about what you said?
Yeah, so in theory, if we can't get an expansion to other areas, then
Then order those. Oh, I'm sorry.
Then are we ordering the eighty-eight and spending the full five thousand, or are we ordering the one thirty-eight and spending twenty-five hundred?
I personally like them all matched, so.
My preference would be that we keep all the benches the same. But if, if the state comes through and puts some screws to you and says that you can't, you can't, you have to follow this, what you propose, then order these.
No, that, that, they're not gonna be concerned about the style, they're gonna be concerned about the location of them and that we don't. So, so if, so essentially it would be, if we can only do these five in this area that we've determined on the grant application, then we're spending twenty-five hundred dollars worth of grant and getting five of the bench one thirty-eights.
Can we add the fancy garbage cans that match the benches or anything that goes with it, especially since it's the gateway, or it has to be benches?
I don't think so.
Active Living.
Okay. That makes sense. I think the motion is bench one thirty-eight, so. It's on the table. Looking for a second?
I'll second it.
Second by DeLuca, any further discussion or questions?
I'm sorry, can you clarify who was the first motion? You were the motion, okay, thanks.
Fay, Fay DeLuca. Alright, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Alright, motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Grant, for your work and congratulations on your first grant with the City of Maple Plain. Alright, uh, next item of business is the DNR Emerald Ash Bor grant.
Grants, I'm gonna take this one if that's okay.
You have this one?
Yeah.
Okay, I was trying to find it in my jacket.
Grants, grants and more grants. Um, so I'd mentioned this to council, we were, uh, they approved it, uh, a few months ago, um, but we couldn't really publicize it, um, until kind of finalized everything. And then somewhere along the way, I realized we need to formalize this with council and actually approve it as a, because it is a contract, so, um, I am requesting that you approve the State of Minnesota Grant Contract Agreement and delegate implementation and grant purchasing to the city administrator. So just a quick overview of the program, um, we were able to apply for this grant with the assistance of Davy Tree Service. Um, Ryan was extremely helpful, they don't charge a fee for this service, um, their hope is to get business from it. Um, however, we are not obligated to utilize them, so we are in the process of getting quotes for these services. Um, so the grant provides twenty-five thousand dollars, um, that we would use to create a tree inventory. So we're inventorying all trees on public lands and right of ways. Um, and then using that plant, or that inventory, we're creating an EAB management plan. So the removal, uh, with this round will be nine infected Emerald Ash trees and then the grinding of the stumps, we're repur, uh, we're then replacing them with twice as many, so we're replacing them with eighteen trees. That management plan then that they create will help us to do some long-term budgeting, um, long-term planning about which trees need to, to come down. The city does need to provide some matching funds, but it's four thousand dollars, uh, and, and then as well as another forty-seven fifty worth of in-kind labor and equipment. So we're hoping, using our, our volunteer program, we're trying to, to round up to get some, uh, volunteers to help with the planting of the trees. And then, um, any of our staff's time, um, in watering and care of those accounts towards that as well. So we're looking at quotes, we are looking, uh, so we've kind of been trying to figure out exactly where to put the new trees. Um, you know, you will, may recall that we planted a number of, um, trees that we got for free from Hennepin County last year. Um, and it is quite a draw on time, um, Dylan's time to water those. So we, um, would definitely, we're looking at, um, the places that are most efficient to water, so adjacent, um, to a building that has water to it, uh, or, uh, he said we could even hook up to, um, a hydrant if we needed to. And, um, then he would just need to kind of turn it on and, and go. So a couple of areas that kind of stood out were, um, adjacent to the warming house at Rainbow, um, and kind of moving west from that building. Um, and then adjacent and moving north from the Veterans Memorial Park Concession Stand. Those areas are relatively open at this point, so there isn't, um, as much of a risk of, of, uh, you know, larger trees that we're gonna need to take down in the near future impacting those new trees. So we're certainly open to suggestions, uh, with regard to placement of the trees. Um, so next steps are essentially finalize quotes, hire those contractors, um, obviously figure out where to put them. Um, and then, uh, recruiting volunteers, do you know anybody, maybe a Boy Scout project, volunteer time, um. And that's the gist of it. Any questions?
Comment? I think SPANTEC a number of years ago did a tree inventory.
You know, I've heard that, I have not been able to get that, or you know what, I found, you know, I did find something. But it wasn't a, like a complete tree inventory, I mean, it wasn't what we're talking about here.
Okay.
Yeah.
I remember when, when we had to determine what trees came down and what parks.
Yeah, yeah, um.
They went through and I, I, I thought they did an inventory and then marked. But I would, you know, they're, I, they're, they're getting harder and harder to work with, the further, further we get away from them, certain contracts.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, I, I re, I, I don't recall exactly what the document looked like, I remember it's, remember, that it wasn't what I was expecting or hoping to see. Um, and yes, anytime we want information from here on out, we need to sign a contract saying that we're gonna pay them if we, if they give us information, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
And, and I would only hope that. And I would only hope that Davy is the most competitive bidder.
I know, right? I hope they will too.
Any other questions?
I would just say for volunteers, they have to do service projects at the Orno schools for both middle school and high school, so that might be a great way to get volunteers.
Especially the NHS.
I, so I've got contacts-
Cause then they can do different hours.
Found a contact for the Honor Society, so if anybody else has any other teacher or whatever contacts, please forward them some to Grant.
I think the counselors do the character program, and so they might be a good contact. I don't know who they are currently, but whoever the school counselors are.
Okay.
Good to know. All right, so we are looking for a motion to approve the State of Minnesota Grant Contract Agreement and delegate implementation of the grant and purchasing to the city administrator. Moved by Frances.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, five to zero. All right. Next item of business this evening is council reports and other business. Anyone want to kick us off? All right, Councilmember Cahill, thank you.
It was a busy month, but mostly, mostly with fun things. National night out, it's always good to get out into our neighborhoods and meet with people and our first responders. Attended the wonderful museum ice cream social, and got to meet a lot more wonderful neighbors. And then, Councilmember Frances and I had cookies with council. We had a great turnout of about seven people, and a few came with their notebooks full of questions, ready to go, articles printed out, so it was a great, very good use of our time. And then, I also had watershed.
Thank you. Councilmember DeLuca.
In addition to several workshops and EBA meeting, the mayor and I attended the police commission meeting, and will be bringing the budget back at budget meeting next Monday.
Councilmember Cahill.
Well, I continue to regularly attend Orno Rotary. I attended my first board meeting as the new president of that organization. I too attended three 19 nights, beautiful night nonetheless. Attended fire relief, middle of the month, various workshops, tonight's business meeting. I'll be attending tomorrow's open house for the turf establishment program, as well as our budget convening a week from today.
Councilmember Frances.
I attended planning commission. And as a result of attending that meeting, I have submitted my application to be a member of the auxiliary, thanks to Mardell. And I attended their picnic. It was past Wednesday, met some, some of the other ladies. I decided to see what the auxiliary's all about. Did the cookies with council, and didn't know what to expect, and it was a great experience. We have residents that are very well-versed in happenings of the city and ask really good questions, and keep us on our toes. Make sure that we're following that straight line and not wavering too far. In fact, I think it even went longer than the two hours. It was, it was good. And I think that's about it. I didn't make any of the night to unite, because I had granddaughter at Vikings training camp, and she won the opportunity to high-five the players up in the practice, and got autographs from Adam Thielen, Justin Jefferson, the coach, and some other players. And JJ did the greeting. So we didn't get home until like 6:30 at night, and Miss Nana was fried.
Sounds like a fun night to be fried for.
Yeah, it was her first time going, and she came off that field grinning ear to ear going, "I can't wait to tell Daddy and Sholman, God, he's going to be so jealous." I'm jealous, because I'm too old to go out there and get autographs. So, that is my excuse for not making it to the event. I had planned it, but granddaughter took the priority.
Sounds good. All right, it has been a busy and fun month, too. I was able to attend night to night, although I would argue that it was a very hot night. And thankfully, I was able to go to all five of the Maple Plain parties. And just I'm super thankful to the hosts and to West Haven Public Safety and Maple Plain Fire for organizing that and including us with that. Clarissa and I were, were able to attend the future fire service meeting. And Loretto and Hamel are working on their merge right now, and we're just continuing to work on small steps as a group. It was good last month. The City of Orno came to the table, so it was nice to have them back. As well, have been attending Rotary meetings and enjoying that. And great opportunities for the city to partnership. Was able to meet with one of our Maple Plain resident who was on the board for Hometown Heroes Outdoor, and was able to do a connection meeting with he and our chief to see if we can make some opportunities arise. Was able to attend Minnesota Women and City Government. We all attended the EDA tonight. Exciting opportunities to hear about that. Was able to attend the mayor's third district meeting with Congressman Phillips and get a legislative update and talk about different ways that he and his staff can be advocating and working with us. Today, Mayor Gronke arranged a meeting downtown in St. Paul and with the governor's office to discuss next steps with regards to Highway 12 in construction. City of Independence was there as well, as well as Chief Crails. And it really does have a huge impact on us as Maple Plain, because they're looking at different options for the project, which could be a one-year, two-year, or three-year, one-time shutdown, two-year shutdown, three-year shutdown. So, I am advocating for Maple Plain that it would be the quickest and most efficient as possible, because our businesses and our city has been hit very hard. And the last thing we need is another shutdown. And also, just being a good neighbor and continuing to work with the coalition on that. So, it's been a busy month. Looking forward to on September 8th, our Hometown Heroes softball game at 6:00 PM at Veterans Memorial Parks. Make sure that's on your calendar. And then on September 24th, the Gulf Charity Event, which is being hosted and organized by McGarry's. And the funds raised will go to our very own first responders, so. Two exciting things to look forward to in September, and hope people will be able to come out and join us at those. With that, looking for communication items for our leaflet. Anyone have anything coming up that we should be?
Volunteers for trees.
Volunteers for trees. Well, usually, I think we've been promoting the two grant opportunities. We should probably mention the solid waste contract, so any ideas for framing that?
Yeah, and I think in particular, if we could, you know, promote the can for, or for sticks and yard waste, that would be great, because I know that's been a burden for people, bundling those and baking. And then, his mention too, tonight it was really good to hear that we can get two recycle cans if that's a need. Or increase the size if you don't have the 95, I believe he said. So, just education pieces, I think, would be great in the leaflet with that.
Yeah, that move, we can still use the Delano Local number to reach that.
Any other leaflet topics, things coming up that we should work?
We should probably begin thinking of the next cookies with council, or whatever we're going to call it. I think I'm up next on the rotation, so if I can work with staff, I'm coming up with a date, time, and place.
Whenever's good for you.
Perfect.
You don't want to mention any of the grants that we just approved tonight? Oh, I was going to-
Yeah, we've been.
Those are a given, and they've been in there.
I can't use muffins with Mike.
No, I'm doing muffins with the mayor, and I did it.
You could do cannabis with council. You could do cannabis with council.
You started it.
Now that it's Lealife.
Way to go, Kaylin, keep him accountable to what he's saying.
Followed by cookies.
Do you have to buy local?
I think on that moment, any other requests or things from staff? Okay, there was a motion to adjourn, anyone want to second that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Frances, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting's adjourned at 8:21.